Okay, good evening at 6:00 PM, March 23rd, 2022. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this will be the last virtual remote meeting with Zoom. From now on, we'll be live at town hall, but we'll continue to televise live a local channel 18. The call number for tonight for butters to call in is (508) 539-1449. Okay, and we're going to insist on a one-minute time limit for remote butters because of there's only two phone lines. And a couple of things to make the meeting go a little smoother. If we could raise our hand to be recognized to speak, and if you would mute your phone when you're not speaking. And all of us in attendance at town hall could rise and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. George Ganson-Muller is absent tonight. Bill Blaisdell, as you can see, is joining us remotely via Zoom. And the rest of the board is here at town hall. Okay, sitting on the first two hearings tonight will be our five regular board members. And Sharon, if you could read the first two continued hearings.
Forty-two Spoon Drift Way, owners BEC MA Properties LLC, request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise an existing single-story residential structure and replace the same with a new two-story residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 111, parcel 127, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March 9th, 2022, hearing at the request of the attorney. Forty-two Spoon Drift Way, owners BEC MA Properties LLC, request a variance under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to vary the front and side setback requirements and lot coverage requirements to allow for a raise and replace of an existing single-story residential structure with a new two-story residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 111, parcel 127, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March 9th, 2022, hearing at the request of the attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the owner of the property at Forty-two Spoon Drift Way. Before I begin, I just want to introduce the development team who's with me tonight. David Martin, who's the engineer, Stephanie Morrison, who's the architect, and Don Devaney, who is the builder. Before you tonight is an application for special permit under the Raise and Replace bylaw to raise a existing three-bedroom home that was built in the 1960s, as well as a request for a variance from the front yard setback. Taking both sides, the average, we're looking for a 3.8-foot variance. The proposed is 34.7 feet.
Is that proposed? Okay. Now, my hair.
It's coming.
The existing structures are currently 1,939 square feet with a lot coverage of 25 and a half, so it's non-conforming. The proposed structures are 2,0982, which a proposed lot coverage of 31.6. There is a unique feature about this lot where there is a coastal bank that is basically broken up by the house. The house sits, the existing house sits right in the middle of it, of this existing coastal bank. After meeting with the Conservation Commission, we submitted the plan that was approved, which is proposed to reconstruct the coastal bank to make it a continuous coastal bank. And that was approved by the Conservation Commission. And this is obviously will improve the resource area, improve the function of the coastal bank by, again, connecting, you know, on each side of the house, connecting it. By doing so, there's a unique result of this, which actually increases the upland area on the lot. So it's just kind of, as they say, a unique feature of what's being proposed actually increases the upland area. The height of the building, I know is always a question for the board. In consultation with David, it was taken at the average of the four corners of the existing grade. So that was done at existing grade at the four corners of the house. So in that respect, we believe that, you know, this is an improvement over the existing conditions. We are proposing a building code compliant house. We're proposing a flood zone compliant house. We are getting rid of the shed, which is non-conforming on the right side of the house looking at it. We are moving the house further away from the lot line to the left, although, you know, as I say, we are asking for a variance on the front yard. We are increasing the distance between the abutting lot on both sides. And so, again, you know, in that regard, you know, we're creating the coastal bank, we're improving the resource area. I think there's a pretty robust mitigation plan, planting plan, that was approved by the Conservation Commission. So in those respects, I would suggest to the board that this is an improvement over existing conditions under 174-17.1. With respect to the variance request, again, we are requesting a variance from the front yard setback, and that is of, again, 3.8, 3.8 feet. And we believe that the variance request is justified because, you know, this lot does have some unique features. As you can see, the lot is a, is a unique shape. The lot, if you've been to it, the site, it goes from back to, from street level to back level, you have about a nine-foot drop. And also, if you literally enforce the bylaw, you wouldn't be able to develop this lot. You have a 50-foot setback from the resource areas, you have a 40-foot setback from the, from the front yard. So in that respect, you know, a literal enforcement wouldn't be, make it the lot unbuildable. And, you know, I would suggest that it is a, you know, in keeping with the scale of the other houses in the area. So with that, I would hope that the board will look favorably on the proposal. But that's my introduction to the project, and I'm happy to open it up to questions for either myself or any members of the development team.
Let me ask, right off the bat, average grade, is that normally how it's determined by the four corners of the house?
Yes, that was, I believe in consultation with David, met with the architect and the engineer on this one, if I'm correct.
I don't remember that, but that sounds, sounds normal.
Okay.
It does sound normal.
I mean, as I say, that was...
But it's the average grade of the whole lot, not the house, right?
It's average grade around the proposed house. So in this case, it's kind of like a ball, so they're taking the two high points on each side, ignoring what's in between. So if you did the average grade on the house, you probably come up with something substantial of all of this. It's a property of the lot.
So are you, I'm sorry, are you saying...
I suggested this kind of issue needs where it's not just a square house, where you typically have a sloped lot. This one has...
So how do you take the average?
So you probably take multiple points to get your average.
It says, it says the original average grade is the land adjacent to the foundation line of any proposed structure. So that means the corners of the foundation.
But the proposed...
What if there are like six different proposed locations?
Yeah, there's multiple locations.
So you'd have to take all those locations?
So that's two...
As Chris is saying, and then like divide them by the number, and there's your average? Is that what you did?
No, we did it from the existing structure. And again, that was the direction that our team got, to do it, to handle it that way.
Well, yeah. I understand that this could be, you could take more points and... Who knows?
Do you get it? Two average, average. How do you do the average?
It doesn't really say four points, you know?
Question for Andy.
Okay, if you would, just state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. David Martin, civil engineer, site, record engineer for the project. My address?
Or your firm's address?
Fourteenth Quessett Avenue, Woods Hole, Mass. Early on the process, both Stephanie and myself, myself in particular, had a phone conversation with the building department to best understand how to determine the average grade according to the code. And we were directed to use the four extreme corners of the proposed structure as it sits on the ground. Because the same questions that you guys have discussed already came up for me, is how would you like me to arrive at the average? So we were directed to do that.
So just for clarification, maybe I misspoke. So did you take the average from the four corners of that plan or the existing?
The proposed structure.
The proposed?
Okay. Is this where it's normally done, proposed?
Well, do you concur with the applicant?
I always found out the average grade before you do anything. Originally existed.
Let me, let me help, can I help? The proposed structure on the natural landscape, not the proposed structure on an altered site.
He's correct. I believe he's correct.
Okay, but you're also filling in some wetlands or something?
We're reconstructing the, the coastal bank runs along the shoreline. Right now, it's been removed when the first home was, the present home was built. We're going to restore that face, that coastal bank, so it can function again. But that does not enter into our determination. We, we're not taking that change of grade into account. As I understand the bylaw, it tells us to use the existing natural grade. Because my call to the building department was, it's a previously altered site. It's not natural. How would you like us to proceed? And he said, yes, it's very altered, you know, under these circumstances.
You're going to go by existing conditions.
David, you concur with, forget about conversation, do you agree with what he's saying in his philosophy?
Not really, no. I think that the previous, I know that Charlie would think that. I go, the original site is what it is now before...
Exactly. We're saying the same thing.
What it is now. Not what it was before the house.
Yeah, I don't think that's...
I think there's...
We're saying the same thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I'm...
So you're saying it is as it exists today?
Correct.
And you're using the four corners of the new property to be built, using for, for compliance of the zoning bylaw, but you're using the existing grades that exist today?
Correct.
You can concur with that, Mr. Zoning Officer?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
I can, I can see where he's doing that.
Where we took the measurements from is where the, where the proposed house is. But it's the existing...
My, my point is where there was a conversation on, and I'm not saying there wasn't, it seems to me that there's an agreement that that's the way it should have been done.
Correct.
So are we saying that it's always going to be on the proposed house, not the current house that's there?
No, the proposed house on the existing grade as the grade sits.
The grade that sits today before they touch it, and then on the new house, the way it's going to be built.
Right.
The question is, it says the average grade around the foundation.
As it exists.
Do you go around the foundation or do you take the point?
And something like this is not just a square building. There's a hundred, there's another eight more points that you could take.
Yeah, and that prompted me to inquire about how we should proceed with that. And that's when we advised to take the four primary corners of the building. I mean, I agree with you, sort of.
Yeah, this could, this could be, you could...
You could take it any number of different ways. That's why I was looking for guidance.
But, yeah, basically, you did take them on the furthest corners. So I see what you're down here.
And do you concur with what you did?
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is.
And do you concur, this plan, from a height standpoint, is in compliance with the plan?
Is that where it came out to wherever we were, was it? What was the average grade? Was it...
Stephanie, number one?
17.21.
Thank you.
My only thought on it was, this was unique, and it is where your foundation is. You're taking the four corners, and there's probably bills. And so if you took your average grade, you'd be sufficient.
Yeah.
But it's average grade around the foundation, but just that's the methodology of the four corners that you stick with. I guess we stick with that.
It would still be, would still be weighted on the front, though, because that's full. So it's, it's...
It'd be about two feet tall, as I measured.
Oh, you checked it? Yeah, okay.
So just for clar, may I ask you? Just for clarity, just because we don't want to have a problem here. Do both of you agree that in fact, the way the applicant has depicted this plan, number one, he did it correctly, or she did it correctly? Number two is, it is in compliance with that zoning bylaw as designed?
I believe it's in compliance, and I believe that, yeah, he did what he had to do. He could have, could have sharpened his pencil a little bit, sure, but he did, he did run the...
The bylaw says the four corners, it doesn't say every point.
Exactly.
As only one member, I listened to you very carefully because you're the boss, as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to zoning issues. I may have a different opinion, but I'm still, if you're of the opinion that's done correctly...
Of the opinion it conforms. The methodology conforms.
And Chris, please?
It depends how you read it, but if it's going to be consistent, and this is the way that it's going to go with the four corners, then I'll go with it.
If that's the way it's written, then that's the way it's written.
I think mathematically, I think it's not actually...
I think that's the engineering side of your brain working.
Yeah, this, this particular lot's getting a slight of it.
Might be something to look into in the future with the bylaws.
Yeah, the idiotic, you know, you're a mathematician.
All right, my next question regards the coastal bank.
Yes.
And I believe that you're moving it, changing it, fixing it, doing something. Could you explain that and how you can add in lot coverage?
Sure. I'll let David speak.
So I'm going to try and create visual here. Forgive me if it's not clear, but you think of this as a coastal bank. I'm on the landward side, you're on the seaward side. Except in here, there's a notch cut out because there was a walkout from the existing house.
Walkout?
Yeah, walkout basement.
Basement, sorry, no. So that was part of the... So that basement is in the floodplain, so it's at risk, but it doesn't comply with FEMA flood standards. So bringing this project forward, we saw two opportunities. One is to fill this space between the broken coastal bank, if you will, and restore its function, and also elevate the lowest level of the house above the FEMA floodplain requirements. When the, the coastal bank standards 92-1 don't really tell us what to do in a specific case like this, they're fairly limited. But, you know, the question might come, what does a bank do when it goes into this notch? Who really knows? But we know when we put the slope back, and we have a clear breaking bank that goes across here, we know where the new line is for top of bank. With this area filled in, and lot area calculated to top of bank, the area of the lot increases.
So you're creating additional land, so you have less lot cover?
We're creating additional land above the coastal bank. Because the coastal bank, the line was nominally at the house by default, because there was no other banks.
So, but when you fill in that to recreate the coastal bank, are you then using that land that you've just now gotten out of the coastal bank, right? Technically? Or you...
It was in the coastal bank, now it's out of it.
All right. Are you using that land for lot coverage calculation?
I'm using, I'm using the land to the top of the coastal bank as restored.
As restored, all right. So not as exists today?
As lot area.
So they're adding in how many square feet? Making the lot from 76 to what?
Yeah, about 9,000. So the lot, if, the lot as it sits today, excuse me.
So what are the numbers?
So currently, the lot is 76.09, but that's the upland area. That gives us lot cover of 25 and a half, so we're already nonconforming. With the addition of the coastal bank, the lot, the lot area is 9,232, which gives us a 31.6.
So you're going 1,800 square feet up ballpark?
Yes.
Okay, did Conservation have any points? Do you feel any...
They were...
They were, they recommended it because...
They fully, fully supported it because coastal bank has some important functions, and in this case, we restored that function. So they were in full support, because it was a damaged, non-functioning resource area previously. And after our restoration efforts, both on the bank and the vegetation, it'll be restored fully functioning.
So just so I understand, if I may ask a question. So you're going, you're asking to go from 25.5% lot coverage, and then you're filling in an area of the coastal bank, using that filled-in area, and then you're asking to go to 36.1, I think it is?
31.6.
So 31.6, utilizing that area that you also filled in?
Correct. I think if you...
And if you couldn't use that area filled in, it would probably be...
37%.
Probably close to 39.
I think, yeah, 30, 38, 39. It's, it wouldn't be, it'd be about...
I don't, I don't think it says anything in the zoning bylaw about existing conditions when you're figuring lot coverage, I don't think. But it sounds to me like that would be a logical way to use it?
Well, we are, we are using the existing conditions.
I need some clarification, because maybe I'm reading something wrong. I have the existing site here, and it says it's 15.6% lot coverage, the existing structure as it sits. But when you go to the proposed, and it has existing and proposed, it now goes up to 25.5.
Well, that, I don't... I can, I can answer that.
Okay, good.
There was a, the 15 that you're looking at is for the entire lot. At the time that existing plan, if you're looking at the one I believe you're looking at, was built, was based on the entire lot area.
Including down...
Right, the 12,000 square feet, so that wasn't, it wasn't...
Then it was brought to my attention that we should be working to the top of the coastal bank.
So not including the actual bottom, not including the bank?
Correct.
And you remove that, that's when it became 25?
25. And their proposed thing is 31.6?
It includes about the land they're filling, so if they didn't include the land they're filling, it would be...
Maybe even more.
Be about, right, about 39%.
I don't know what I'm missing there. That's a special part, and I don't understand why they go up here.
It says in our bylaw, they get a...
Chris?
I'm, I'm having trouble looking at the plan, wondering where he went from 7609, non-floodplain, to 9432. When I go from the top of the coastal bank to the house, I only added about 500 or so square feet, so I'm wondering where this other 1,300 or so came from. I mean, I can show you the plan that I used with the 11 contour, from the new 11 contour to the house. I don't, I'm trying to, so in other words, if you take what I have for what I think is new, non-flood, you're actually at 37%. So I don't...
That's where you'd say it would be if you didn't include that, filling that?
No, I'm saying even including the fill, and I think the fill calculation may be incorrect, unless you can show me something I don't see on the plan.
Could I walk over your plan and help, or share my plan here?
Oh, here it is.
So I could show you what I think that...
Yeah. I think this is only... I'll show you what I have. I'm just wondering where you got it from, unless you, even if you use the inside of the house, you don't have it.
1,600 square feet. Oh, I stole it. I must have stolen it.
The pressing top of bank, let me get this upside down, this back in here. Here it is, TOB. So pressing top of bank is right here, and it runs into the house. TOB comes in here, at elevation 14 contour.
So you're talking, this flood zone, out of sea is above 11, right?
Yes, but if the slope continues, it's steeper than 1 and 4, the bank runs landward until it's one counter.
But see this flood zone line?
I do, yes.
You can't, this is all above floods, this doesn't count.
It does. Top of bank can, top of bank can run above floodplain until it breaks through the slope less than 1 and 4.
Can someone show me where this area is on the existing plan?
5.5%.
Yeah.
Got a highlighter?
Here's a pen. That's the existing plan, with the existing, with the existing grades and contour, right? I don't understand where you're filling.
Because this one sits 20...
Final, top of...
This line right across here.
Any recalculating?
So there's your coastal bank.
It's a, it's a...
So where is it? Use the highlight.
There's it. Once this area, once this area is re-landscaped, the new top of coastal bank runs with the floodplain.
You're telling me that the coastal bank runs all the way outside of the house?
Top of coastal bank was at 14, and it moved to this line here. 11 and out. Because coastal bank used to run up into the house, but it no longer does, when it gets regraded in these two areas also. So it's regraded here, here, and here, and I think that's where your mine...
Where do you have your existing coastal bank when you...
Top of bank runs in here.
With the plan, you can just take your...
A TOB, and coastal bank over here, at 16. And it goes into the house and then comes back out of the house? I don't...
I was just thinking, the way I read it, you'd have to get a higher...
The variance is...
The artistic number, but...
Right, yeah. And the other side.
Yeah, and lot coverage is this one.
Right, yeah.
Based on what I'm explaining.
But he has it over here in this one, but heaven's common, it doesn't...
Having dinner.
He has the lot coverage in the variance. But we also have the setback, too.
So Chris, if I may, Chris, what are your thoughts? Speak to us, huh?
I'm not even...
So you don't agree?
I'd have to see the Conservation plan, but maybe I can help.
Can I say something, Jim?
Please.
As one member, I'm a little concerned about going in excess or giving more, really, in reference to lot cover, specifically the way you're doing it. But even if you weren't doing it the way you're doing it, I would be concerned. Why would I be concerned? At town meeting, when we received our approval for our Raise and Replace bylaw, it was a clear message sent to all members of this board, I believe, that was no McMansions, and we said, you know, lot coverage, we're going to be very careful on, we're going to be tough on this, we're going to be very careful in a lot of aspects. As one member only, and I can only speak for myself, I have always said, and I will continue to say, and I guess there's always that, that ability or that chance in life where I will change this opinion, but if you're at 20, 25% of whatever it is today, I would not approve 25.1 in addition to that. And I understand you have a right to, well, I believe you have a right to ask for variance, certainly, and we...
We don't, we don't need a variance. It's a not, it's already a non-conforming condition. So under your Raise and Replace bylaw, your, your test is substantially more detrimental to what is existing today.
I'm saying to you, as one member, it is more detrimental. That's, you are correct, you do know, you need a variance in another aspect.
Correct.
You are correct, in reference to lot, lot cover, you would not need a variance. But you would need a finding or a special permit, certainly it says it is not more detrimental.
Means the variance to go closer to the street.
Correct.
But I'm saying to you, I'm just talking lot coverage, I'm not even talking about the other aspects.
That's my next question. Tell me about why you have to go closer to the street.
So the reason we're going closer to the street is obviously because we're coming, we're moving it away from the resource area, so it becomes closer to the street. Also, if you look... Also, if you look at the way it's configured, if you look at the way the existing house is configured, we're right on the lot line, if you're looking street level, to the abutter on the left. So in order to configure the house, so we move away from the abutter to the left, it brings the house a little bit forward.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What is the size of the existing house now, square footage?
Square footage, I believe it is, oh, I have...
I think it's nineteen hundred, nineteen hundred something, I think.
So the existing building structure is fourteen eighty-seven.
What's the proposed?
The proposed building structure is nineteen eighty-three, so about five hundred square feet difference.
Why are you making it so big? Why do you need to go closer to the street?
I think that's what the applicant's requested, you know, that's what the...
That's all I wanted to hear.
Right. But, you know, again, I think given the, given the circumstances of the lot and the topography, you know, that's in order to, you know, make this project work, they need that request for variance for the, from the front.
Chris, can I, can I ask you a question? If, if in fact the house was sized so that there weren't any setback or side yard issues relative to the new structure, that would also perhaps result in a house that was smaller in coverage of the lot and would be less apt to cover the amount that's being covered now?
Right, I, I guess I would have to defer to the architect or the engineer on how much, because again, if you take, if you manipulate that corner to make it conforming to the average of both, you know, I'm not sure how much lot coverage you're actually reducing, but it would, it certainly reduce it by some degree.
Any other questions? Anybody? Bill, are you there, Bill?
I am, I am here. I'm, I'm, I'm questioning, I think the same as Ron was earlier, to go from twenty-five point five to thirty-one point six in lot coverage. I'm assuming the twenty-five point five versus the thirty-one point six are coverages based on the lot after you've repaired the coastal bank? Is that correct?
The existing lot coverage is based on what's on the ground today. The, on the plan showing the proposed lot coverage, that's based on proposed conditions.
Well, that, that raises a real concern on my part, because if you're covering twenty-five point five percent on a seven thousand plus square foot lot, and now you're covering thirty-one point six percent on something that's fifteen hundred square feet bigger lot, that's a considerable increase in lot coverage.
I, I don't see the hardship of making the way this structure is designed to qualify for variance.
I don't know why...
It's, it's, it's quite a, it's quite a structure with all these different angles. As one member, I don't see why you can't just make it a little bit smaller cheating here and there to get it down to the correct lot coverage. We just don't normally, we haven't normally given variances for lot coverage, or I guess you're not guessing.
We're not, we're asking for a variance for lot coverage.
The lot coverage size, we haven't been allowing, I mean, we grandfathering in because it was twenty-five, and that's already a bonus over twenty, and I believe it's twenty in this neighborhood.
Again, I guess I would...
The board has not, has historically found that any increase in lot coverage, even if it's already pre-existing non-conforming, is more detrimental to the neighborhood. Is more detrimental, so they have not found it is not, so that's the problem.
Well, again, and I certainly understand the, the board's position on lot coverage. And again, if you read the raise and replace bylaw, it's not substantially more detrimental to what is existing on the ground today. And I think if the board focuses just on the lot coverage as opposed to all the other features that are making this project better, you know, I do think that they outweigh the board's concerns on the lot coverage, because again, we're making this, this house building code compliant, it's a nineteen sixty's structure. We're making it flood zone compliant, so you're, you know, eliminating the risk, which is a benefit to the town. The more houses you have that are flood, flood zone compliant, I think, you know, helps you with your FEMA, you know, regulation issues. We're recreating the coastal bank, which is a benefit to the resource area, it's a benefit to the lot. Conservation approved it this way, and there's a robust mitigation landscape plan. And we are eliminating some of the additional non-conformities, as I said, the sheds getting. So I think you gotta look, the, the board should look at the totality of the circumstances when, when addressing, you know, is it substantially more detrimental than what's there on, you know, what's there existing? Because that's what the, the test is, under the raise and replace bylaw.
I agree to the point that everything is being made better, that's absolutely true. But that's going to be true with anything rebuilt there, because what's there is so old and it's just, and actually, the way this sits on the lot is just horrible.
Right.
So anything is better than that. But it kind of ties our hands now that if we say, okay, on this project, we approve thirty-five percent lot coverage... Every house that comes here is going to say, well, we're going to go to forty percent, we're going to go to forty-nine percent, whatever, because we're making it better. If you built a sixteen percent lot coverage, it would be make it better. That's just my opinion. We've been trying to keep that from, because this town had a problem with houses were getting too big, especially in New Seabair along the water. They were just made too big.
And I don't think that this house is out of scale with the surrounding area here either. You know, there are some pictures of the, the houses adjacent that we provided. So I don't think that this is, you know, it's not doubling or tripling the size of the houses in the neighborhood. I think it's pretty consistent with the scale of what's around.
But it is the lot, the lot is the lot.
All right, I mean, Bill has a question.
Yeah, Chris Corrane, do you have any idea what the lot coverages are for the, the surrounding homes?
I don't, but I can certainly find that information if the board wishes. I don't think...
And I'm just interested if, if this is like an outlier at thirty, thirty-five percent, thirty-six percent?
I know, I know, one in particular, I know it, and it's fairly close to that, and it isn't anywhere near. And it's a good-sized house, but it's a lot accommodating.
Right.
Hey, Sharon, would you like to read some comments?
I have Evan's comment to Chris Gallagher, dated today. Chris, truthfully, unsure about your latter assertion in the zoning. This house currently sees the minimum allowed maximum lot coverage. So the variance for lot coverage is not necessary. The board needs to make the finding that the increase in the lot coverage is not substantially more detrimental than what exists previously. Based on the calculations you provided, this excessive increase with area in the floodplain impact may be more detrimental. That finding is within the discretion of the ZBA to determine. The existing condition shows one conforming side setback and one non-conforming side setback. The applicant proposes to make the non-conforming setback more conforming, however marginally so, while als, while also proposing a new non-conformity of the other side setback. The creation of this non-conformity does require variance. I would not recommend the board grant this variance unless hardship pursuance to shape topography or soil conditions necessitate such variance. In this case, I think a reduction in the home proposed gross floor area can accommodate something conforming. Lastly, the existing conditions does not show the front setback as conforming, and they are proposing to create a new non-conformity here within a reduction in the front yard to forty-seven point seven feet, similar to above. I would not recommend granting the request to vary the front yard setback unless hardship is defined, and at Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight applies. The purpose and intent of raise and replace bylaws is the preservation of grandfathered rights upon the demolition of grandfathered structures. Although the bylaw contemplates a mechanicism for creating new conformities, it does mechanism to create, for creating new non-conformities, it does not encourage it, and the board must apply the hardship criteria as it would any other request. In fact, the zoning act is specifically designed to not perpetuate non-conformity. This home can most certainly be raised and replaced and can continue, extend, or alter the pre-existing non-conformities that exist, one side yard and lot coverage with a finding that are not substantially more detrimental. But the proposed, in my opinion, is not necessarily considerate of the limitations of the bylaw itself. It seems too much house on too small a lot in consideration of the existing conditions. You can feel free to share my thoughts with the ZBA and the petitioners, and the petitioners' counselor. Thank you, Evan Liar.
So the only comment I have to that, I don't, we, we've asked for a variance for the front yard, but I don't believe that there's any non-conformities being created on the side yard setbacks. I believe that we're increasing the setbacks on both sides. There's a, there's a shed that's already non-conforming that's being removed. And then I believe, so I believe on the right side looking to the street, we're coming, I can't, unfortunately, I can't read it, but I think we're coming close to the fifteen feet. And then on the left side, we're, we're increasing the setback. It's still not conforming, but we are increasing it, so there's no, no variances required for the sides.
I agree with you, I agree with that.
But, you know, otherwise, you know...
Any final comments?
Bill has his hand up, John.
Bill?
Yeah, Chris Corrane, could you tell me what the current front yard setback is under current conditions?
Yes. So the current, yeah, because the current yards, front yard setback is thirty-eight and a half based on the average of the two houses on either side, so the house...
So it's, it's non-conforming?
No, no, no. It's thirty-eight and a half... Let's let me double check.
Did it say forty-one?
I thought it was...
Oh, the average is two, I'm just saying with the exact, you just want to know what the existing house is now, not the average of the neighbors.
It says forty-one point four.
Forty-one point four. Is that what you're asking, Bill, what the house is now setback, or the average?
Yeah.
Right, forty point four to the, the corner. If you look at the arrow that slides by the, the septic tank there.
So it's conforming right now?
Correct.
Yes, it's conforming right now.
Forty-one point four, Bill, I think.
Forty-one point four, so it's inconformant.
Yes.
Correct. But if you look at the rear of the property, it's all in non-conformance. So there's a little bit of a give and take with the way the project was developed to take it out of the resource area. It's currently in the, most of the back rear of the house is in the resource area. So moving it up front, you know, was, you know, again, a trade-off to, you know, as I say, make it more non-conforming, make it more conforming in the rear.
You can make it smaller, it would work more place.
Absolutely.
I, for one member, don't have a problem with a variance from the front yard setback, but I do have a concern and an issue with going from twenty-five five to thirty-one six.
Well, I think it's an odd-shaped lot. It does slope, so even though I don't care for the front yard setback variance, I think it's probably appropriate.
I don't have too much of a problem with that if it gets it away from the wetland, but...
If you don't get by the lot coverage, the variance...
Well, that is true.
And if the lot coverage issue is an issue, then...
Okay, is there anybody on the phones that would like to make a comment? Anybody in the audience?
Let's just be clear, he's not looking for a lot coverage variance. He's looking to extend a previously non-conforming lot coverage.
That's correct.
What else do you have?
I have Board of Health of Conservation.
Oh, thank you.
Board of Health, Forty-Two Spoon Drift Way. The proposed raise and replace of the existing dwelling requires the following tasks to be completed. A septic inspection for the existing septic system. A disposal works construction permit from the Board of Health to move slash replace the existing septic tank. An asbestos inspection of the existing dwelling by a private licensed asbestos inspector with embatement if necessary. A road inspection by the Board of Health agent. The requirements shall be performed and submitted to the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a building permit. The existing septic permit states that a three-bedroom septic is provided. The property is zoned two, so the dwelling is restricted to three bedrooms. The floor plans have been reviewed, and the basement office is considered a bedroom due to the privacy, square footage ten by twenty, and the egress to grade from the room. A six-foot opening must be provided for that room to not be considered a bedroom. Conservation. This, the Conservation Commission has issued an order of condition approving the tear-down and rebuild of the home at Forty-Two Spoon Drift Way.
Okay.
Well, I guess, given the board's comments on the lot coverage, I, it may be best for, I mean, it sounds to me like the board is, wants the applicant to take another look at the lot coverage issue. And so instead of putting it to a vote tonight and putting the, the board on the spot, you know, I think it probably makes sense to do a continuance and take a look at it. And I request a continuance for the next hearing to take a look at the lot coverage issues.
May I make one statement, though, just to help you for the next meeting?
Sure.
I think that makes sense. But as one member, if you're at twenty-five, what is it, twenty-five?
Twenty-five and a half.
Twenty-five and a half, as one member?
Don't go to twenty-five six.
Don't go to twenty-five six.
Okay.
And, and that includes, if you're going to fill the whole lot or fill banks or anything else, that includes, you can't use that area.
So I, I guess I, I misunderstood. So you want, you want us to take the lot coverage based on the existing conditions, or...
Correct, that's, that's how I look at it. That was my commitment when I went, when I sat at town meeting, for me, as one individual. I was not, I said that I would be tough on lot coverage. Your father sat in that seat many a time, he understood my statement. I'm only one member, though.
I understand.
There's other people here that may totally disagree with my theory. But when it comes to lot coverage, I can't, I will not say that I won't, but for me to find that it's not more, that it's not more detrimental, you gotta really go pretty far, and I don't, no one's gone there yet with me, sorry, as one vote.
As one member, I would have to see more hardship than what's there to allow, to go that much of an increase. Because you're already getting grandfathered in five percent over.
Correct.
Which is a lot.
This house is almost twice the size as what currently exists.
Just, just my opinion is, is just what we've been trying to stay with.
Can we talk about the deck?
So, does he want to vote, or is he...
Do you want to vote, or do you want to...
Do you want us to vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Stephanie Morrison.
Stephanie Morrison, I'm the architect. Do you need my address?
What firm do you work for, and what's the address?
Local studio, it's for Vernon Street in Medford, Massachusetts. Sorry, I have a cold. The numbers, I think, seem alarming to you, but if you look at them, the, do you have the diagrams?
Yeah.
The actual structure, I realize that decks are counted as structure, you know, by letter of the zoning law. But if you actually look at the existing house versus the proposed house, where actually, the, the existing building structure, not including the existing deck, is fourteen hundred and eighty-seven square feet. And the proposed is actually only nineteen hundred and eighty-three. It's actually just a little bit over five hundred square feet more of conditioned space than what's there now.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On your, on the site plan, it shows the footprint, it also shows overhang, front and back, on the, on this middle section here?
Yes.
Is that a roof overhang, or is that a second floor overhang?
It's a roof overhang, yeah. Yeah. So I feel like the numbers are, and like I said, I, you know, I understand that by letter of the zoning, that the deck is counted as part of the structure, but in reality, you know, it's not a twenty-nine hundred square foot, footprint at thirty-two feet high.
As, as one member, as a recommendation, you could eliminate the deck and make it a patio, now eliminate a lot of square footage. a patio, now eliminate a lot of square footage.
And I think that we will be looking at that.
But we have to look at the numbers that get put in front of us, not the actual building.
I know, I know.
So, but that's one, that's a good sized deck, and if you go to patios, we don't look at patios as, as lot coverage.
Right.
As long as it's not raised.
As long as it's not a raised, you know, retaining wall patio.
Right. It's a challenge, though, given the lot, given the shape of the lot, how it dips down and it's high and low, and, you know, we're trying to mediate that with the house.
That can be a hardship.
Would you build a smaller house?
And actually, the, the house itself is quite modest. I know Mary Ann has floor plans, but the house itself is fairly modest.
Might be. I just look at it, I'm looking at numbers that are put in front of me as one number.
Right.
I appreciate your comments.
Would you like us to vote or do you want to?
I think it would make sense to continue the hearing to the next available.
When's next available, Mary Ann?
The next available is April 13th.
Does that sound good to you?
I'm available.
April 13th, Senator?
Did you make the motion?
So Chris, you're asking for a continuation on both of us, one at a time?
Yep.
On the special permit, April 13th.
Correct.
Continuation.
That is correct. Requesting a continuance of the April 13th on the request for special permit under the raise and replace by law.
I would like to make a motion, yeah, I think we should, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant, Chris Corre's request for extension under the special permit, application of 42 Spoon Drift Way.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second, we'll do a roll call vote. Bill, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Jim? Scott? Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Let's do the next one.
Well, I just, can I just clarify one other thing, Chris?
Sure.
He saw something.
On the second-
The variance.
Variance, it says, Owners VEC Mass LLC, request a variance under Section 174-31, the zoning bylaws to vary the front, the size, setback requirements, and lot coverage requirements. So it's asking for a variance.
It's in our application.
That's how it's written on the application. It's not up to the CBA.
All right, I'll, I'll take a look at that, you know, I have to throw somebody under the bus who, who did the application, that wasn't me, but I'll double check that I-
I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
I'll take a look at that, because I-
So you're asking for?
I'm asking for a continuance of the variance request, also to the April 13th hearing.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's attorney, Chris Corre's, request for extension of his variance request for 42 Spoon Drift Way and probable end of thereto in reference to not seeking for lot coverage variance.
Correct. And that may have been the confusion when, when Mr. Golsey, you picked up on the 15% issue, so maybe when it got filed, we were thinking that it was at 15%, so that may have been where the confusion lied, but.
I can dig myself out of a hole, so that's why I said the variance of a lot coverage.
Right.
But I did, it's wrong.
Appreciate it.
So Jim's second, let's do a roll call vote. Bill, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the House, see you in a couple weeks.
See you next month.
What's the date of that? 13th.
April 13th.
Somebody sign my name?
You gotta come in, Bill.
Okay.
We're gonna wait here while you come.
Sure.
Okay, nothing to sign, correct? Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
Yep. Four Blair Circle, petitioner Keith Gilmore requests a variance of the front yard setback under 174-31, land space requirement of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition on property located in an R5 zoning district, map three parcel 40 Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Daniel E. Soles.
How you doing?
Good evening. I am Keith Gilmore. I'm the designer, builder, and representative for Dan Phillips tonight on this application to request a front yard setback encroachment variance. So what we're looking to do here, looking at the site plan, is put on this proposed addition on the side, the front right side of the home from the street, and that's causing a, we're asking for basically to create a nonconformity on the right front side to decrease the front yard setback from 40 foot, 40 and a half feet to 25 feet. Where it's kind of an odd situation, being a cul-de-sac has a-
What's your thought?
Sort of a, almost like a half side yard setback and half front setback on that same proposed addition there. So that's what we're looking at. And the purpose of the additions, the home has a three-bedroom septic on it, however, it has two bedrooms on the second floor that are relatively small, and the owner's wishing to, you know, get a more of a master bedroom on the third floor to have the three-bedroom count that he has and a septic system, and to also create more of a family room downstairs, whereas now there's a living room, but it's also kind of like the entryway to the home as well, and it's not, you know, not very sizable, I guess, you know, so having the new family room below would be nice for holidays and the like.
Hey, great, it's a funky shaped lot.
That's for sure. My question is, where is the front entrance and where is the parking on this?
Yeah, my apologies, yeah, we don't have the driveway depicted there, but it is a cir, sort of a horseshoe shape that enters in on Blair Circle side and exits out on Deerfield side. So it kinda, just kinda curves right across the front, and the front entry is that stoop that you are seeing.
So it's like a horseshoe driveway?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right. Yeah, and there's trees and plantings and whatnot on the nub of the, the-
There's no master bed, there's no bedroom on the first floor now?
No, there's not.
It's just two bedrooms upstairs.
Just two bedrooms upstairs.
So they're trying to create a master bedroom downstairs.
Correct, yeah.
Mary Ann, could you share that screen?
Can you see it?
No, you have to click on it.
Where is the front yard setback?
Is that better?
Oh, I see.
No.
The front yard setback is going from 41.5.
It's okay, I, I looked at the, I looked at the plan, so I think I have it down by memory.
You gotta click on the one next to it. Go left, there, look there, the shed.
Thank you.
Still need it.
I don't have any issues.
I thought it was a, what helped? We'll have to read them.
He got it all right.
We'll wait till we get to that.
I'm okay with it.
I have zero issues. It's a funky lot.
Bill?
It's a small house.
I, I have no problems with that.
Jim? Anybody? No? Okay, why don't we read some? Sharon, if you would?
All right. Drew doesn't have any comments. Board of Health, originally Glenn wrote, the, a septic inspection is required for the change in footprint last inspection in 2017. The first floor plan is incomplete, the proposed rooms uses are not labeled, the dwelling is serviced by a three-bedroom capacity septic system, there are three primary bedrooms proposed on the second floor, the site plan depicts a compliant location for the bedroom, for the addition, and then he's, Drew has revised his comments. He says that at 4 o'clock today, hi Keith, that looks great, I have no more issues with this application. So-
So cancel that.
So that, that third bedroom is going on the second floor, not on the first floor?
To correct what happened, the bedrooms were always on the second floor, but, pardon me, the health agent's name, is it Eric?
Glenn, Glenn.
Glenn, I'm sorry. Glenn emailed me his concern about, in efforts to keep the cost down, there's an existing, on the first floor off of the kitchen, there's an existing, what looks like was planned to be like a laundry, and we proposed to just put a, simply put a door in there, and it was like a three-foot door. So his, his concern was that, under the guidelines of the definition of a bedroom, the family room, the proposed, new proposed family room would fall under the guidelines of like a bedroom. So I had to sort of shell around the, the existing half bathroom and the laundry to create a six-foot opening. And so I did that today, I emailed the revised plan over to Glenn.
That's not this plan?
Correct. No, that, the printed plan that you have, I believe, is-
I can see Glenn's issue in that new hallway, there's a door.
Yeah, I don't know if you can see, this is just a eight by 11, but I, I created a six-foot pass through there, and so we cleared it up and he's happy with it.
So if one were to make a motion, what plan is he going to refer to?
The one revised that I emailed over today to Glenn and also to Mary Ann dated revisions 32322.
Oh, page seven, I'm on page seven.
Okay.
You lost me a new page, Sharon.
I can't get them out, I'm just like-
My page seven has the old-
He just went.
There's two pages left.
That's fine, no, I'm not, I just want to make sure, if the motion were to be made, I want to make sure the motion is cracked, that's all.
I have a few-
I saw it, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good, I just don't have it here.
Yeah.
He wants to reference it for the motion.
Okay, I have some extra copies of the smaller version of it, do you like it?
As long as it has a revised plan on it and some, that would be great.
What's the revision date?
And it's got revision on it.
What's the revision date?
I'm sorry.
The day of the revision.
Today, today, 323.
So 323. What's that?
The date is not on there.
It's on this plan, that's already been submitted. Mary Ann got it.
So in the future, whenever you do a revision, under law, it should say revision date and what was revised.
Okay. I have the revision date.
But you see, it would should say revision date, da-da-da, and what was revised, to say that you added a six-foot open.
Okay.
Because-
Yeah, what the revision was, because no one would know.
Glenn would know. Is that what you were emailing today?
All right, could you do me a favor, please? I think-
Want me to circle the area?
This is what was emailed today.
Okay. Could you do me a favor, sir?
Sure.
In your writing right there, under this revision, put what was revised, added a six-foot opening, and then circle it, and then initial.
How's that, is that okay, sir?
And you can use this plan as reference?
I think that's wonderful.
And you signed it and dated it, right?
And, and could you do two, please? Do this one and the second.
The date is the-
Small house.
Trying to be accommodating, yeah, you go, Mary Ann. And I'm going to make reference, this is my motion, if I was asked to make one.
Do we have that?
The cul-de-sac is like right here.
Yeah.
Lock the area.
Yeah, this is really-
Yeah, I guess the driveway's like that.
Thank you, sir. Then that would be great.
You save you a lot of time.
There you go. We tried to accommodate.
The only thing I don't see on here, I don't think it's lot coverage.
Here's one that's not.
Yeah, I'm looking for it, yeah. Existing lot coverage, sorry. We just went through all that.
What is the lot coverage?
No, it's there, isn't it?
Where is it? Am I missing it?
Is it at the top?
That's lot area.
Lot area, oh.
Do we know what the existing lot coverage is of the structure?
Um, yeah, I know that I put that in the application, let me see if I can.
It's supposed to be on the manual minimal.
I don't think it's an issue, looking at it, I just-
No, it wasn't an issue, I know that, but-
There is that depth, too.
The number, I'm not sure off the top of my head, and I don't have the copy of my application, let me.
He's on his team.
Yeah, I think I missed the last one.
I don't think it was 10%, I think it was less.
4.15.
Really?
How can it be 4, um, 4?
4.5.
Who are you reading that from?
I guess it's possible.
Should be on the issue.
Well, you can put it in the corner there, it's not fair to be able to-
Why did you raise the question, then?
Because I thought we'd have to have it just, just to make sure that's not an issue. We just went through that with the last one, and it's not fair that-
Yeah, but this is not an issue.
Want to add lot coverage, sir? Sir, can we, we ask you again, you can't appear for long?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it's an issue, I just want to make sure that's something we have.
It's not, it's not, just put down right here, existing lot coverage equals, may I have the other one?
Do the same amount.
Existing lot coverage equals, what is this? Equals.
He agrees with that.
He's writing it.
Right there. Yeah. Proposed lot coverage equals.
And you got these numbers from the engineer, correct?
I did the calculations myself.
He seems like an intelligent human being.
They're so low that I'm not worried about it.
And then just initial that, please?
18.8.
Yeah, and then do the same to this.
If it's 6.7, I'm not too worried about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
But normally, we'd have to have an engineer give us 20. Depends on where parts of town can be moved, but-
Yeah, and I mean, just simply looking at it, I mean-
Yeah, you take that in the corner.
What's the size of the lot?
15,000.
So it's over 10. Over 10 is 20.
Well, what's the, what's the overall structure?
10 is 25.
Well, what's the, we can do the calc, wait, I'm not worried about his calculations, because it's not that hard to figure out, but I just want to, I just want to make sure-
What's the lot, what's the lot coverage in square feet? I'll figure out on my computer.
The lot, the lot is 15,019. What's the structure?
It could be 10,000 square.
I don't know what the coverage, do you know what the coverage is? With the, you have the, with the, the square footage? Of the new and, the new and proposed, add it together? The proposed is 16 by 22, so that's it.
What coverage is?
The existing?
Show that to Dave.
The addition is 16 by 22.
See if he likes it. You just don't have the numbers, so I can't.
Yeah, the, the proposed is 16 by 24.
We don't know.
Isn't it?
22.
Oh, okay.
So that's easy.
16, 22.
That's 352, but what's the existing in the deck?
There's nothing on any of these.
Well, the deck doesn't do a lot of the stuff.
Yes, it does. Absolutely. Unless it's a patio on the ground, because it's supported. When you build a deck, you need to support it.
You're still gonna be... I still think you'll be...
Well, I don't know if we should... I mean, it's still...
Are we guessing?
We're guessing. But it's not close, so I'm not too concerned about it. I don't think it's an issue. I just, we have to be diligent about it. I don't know if you want to get the actual... You're the chairman. Do you want to have him get the actual calculations?
Yeah, because I'm not gonna sign it without an actual calculation.
What about the motion we're making to clarify that issue?
Oh, okay. You're right, it's twenty-four. Mine says twenty-two. It's two plans.
I didn't see anything on the existing and the other plans.
I mean, is it gonna be the end of the world if we continue two weeks? You can get us those calculations, so we can have it? Well, no offense, you're not...
Can I add something? I took twenty percent of the size of the lot.
And three thousand square feet.
And I came up with three thousand.
I'm not too concerned about it.
It can't be. That's what I'm saying.
I'm not too concerned about it.
I think...
Twenty percent is three thousand square.
If I could just say the following.
The building footprint with the addition is a little over, like, a thousand eighty.
So, he's no issue.
So, that's like ten, twelve percent at max.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
Three times, it could be twice that. My point is, is if it were conditioned upon a plan being... Because we are so certain that it's gonna meet the condition, why hold him up? Just put it in the motion.
If it was close, I'd be concerned. It's not even close.
Yeah, if it was even in light years close, because this hasn't even got a prayer.
You know, all you have to do is just say that the board is determined that it meets the existing...
I wasn't even gonna say... I was just gonna say that the applicant prior to the applicant... It's not applying for building materials to handle it out of stamp by a certified engineer saying that it in fact supplies the lot coverage. So, takes care of it, yeah.
No, I'm in total agreement. I think what we're on is that is correct. I think we need a plan stamped by an engineer saying that this is the current and that's the proposed. And I know it's way below the maximum, so it's not a big issue. But it should be on the file.
That's a good one. That's a good one.
I know it's a precedent we usually set, but it's not even close. So, I think we're okay, but you could condition it.
We used to condition in the old days, and we've changed due to input from various...
Well, if he was at eighteen percent, seventeen percent, I'd make him get actual numbers. But this is so not even close. I say you condition it that he supplies the building department at the time of as-built, actual lot coverage.
I was gonna say even at the time of application of building.
Tell you what, we'll do it that way. Give you a one-time.
All right.
Next time you come back...
All right.
You know the rules.
And not you. It's gonna be an engineer, a licensed engineer.
Gotcha. I'll have my buddy John and make sure he's got it on paper for you.
As long as he has a stamp that's real.
Yep.
It's about an emotion. He's here one time.
Well, he's gotta get as-built.
I can't... You want me to put that in a motion?
One-time deal.
Real stamp.
Oh, my God. I can't do that.
Not a good idea.
No. I can't make a motion like that, Billy.
The mouse layers, I think, can do it when they do their estimate.
All right. Do we have anything else to read in? Any more comments?
No, comments were done.
Anybody on the phones calling in? All right. Would you like to make a motion, Ronald?
Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion that we issue a variance for the front yard setback under Section 174-31 to the petitioner Keith Gilmore and the owner, Daniel E. Phillips of For Blair Circle. Said variance, front yard setback variance, is in the amount of... Correct me if I'm wrong, sir. The requirement is forty feet. You're supplying twenty-five feet. So, your relief is fifteen. Am I correct?
The last part of that?
You're looking for fifteen feet of relief. So, fifteen plus twenty-five equals forty?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So, the amount of the relief is fifteen feet. And said relief is, and it's to allow for the construction of an addition on property located in R5 zoning district, map three parcel forty Mashpee Mass. In making this motion, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mass General Law 48, Section 6. Site plan, For Blair Circle Mashpee Mass, prepared by... Prepared for Daniel Phillips, scale one inch, go thirty feet, dated October 21st, 2021. Revisions 112221, reduced edition. Prepared by Demarsat Land Surveying, signed and stamped by John J. Demarsat Jr., number 936859, professional land surveyor, dated 112221. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, if I can just ask this question. He should have probably an engineer of that stature in reference to this lot coverage that I just mentioned?
Land surveyor.
He'd be a professional land surveyor.
Right. So, that same... You can use any land surveyor you want. But I'm gonna state after that statement I just made that that land surveyor is also gonna prepare a plan and submit to the billing inspector prior to you or at the same time of the application of a billing mitt that will depict the existing lot coverage and the proposed lot coverage. It said proposed lot coverage will meet our existing zoning. Number three, plans prepared for Daniel Phillips, Dan Phillips, For Blair Circle Mashpee Mass, dated 4/7/22, and revised 32322. Said revision is an opening opened up to be six feet wide as depicted on a plan signed by the petitioner Keith Gilmore and outlined as to what that change was. And also, on said plan, the petitioner Keith Gilmore stated